Today is September the 2nd, 2025. It says 5:30 PM and we're at our city council regular board meeting at our city chambers here at City Hall. And we do have quorum with Councilman Davis, Councilman Garcia, Councilman Diaz, Councilman, Councilwoman Ramon, and myself. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we please have a moment of reverence? Thank you. Okay, we have here with us the Tejano Legends Chapter 26. They, first, we want to thank you for that Frontera Fest that you guys had. We heard it, it was an amazing event. We really want to keep the Tejano music here in our community. We personally weren't able to assist, but we really wanted to, but we heard it was amazing. We, we've also heard that you have something that you want to present to council?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead.
You guys want to step?
And thank you very much to the whole, uh, the city management, the city council, and the City of Eagle Pass. Thank you so much, and I'm just going to read this for you. Certificate of appreciation. This certificate is proudly presented to the City of Eagle Pass. Thank you for your tireless efforts and your dedication, mission to, to our mission. Your hard work and commitments are truly appreciated. Signed, Oscar Gonzalez as the President, Juan Pariéntos as the Vice President, and well, Luque Lopez as the Secretary, and members, Tony Lacheta.
Quinino.
Quinino de Plaza.
Quinino de Plaza.
Tony Peñalver, Miguel Reyes.
Guti.
And Mr. Menchaca.
Guti Menchaca.
Guti Menchaca. Thank you so much for, for your tireless efforts, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
We would also like to thank the Maverick County, Maverick County Management, and of course, the City of Eagle Pass for all the efforts they do for us. We thank you.
And this is just one of many events coming.
That's what we want. We got to make these events come as much as we can, right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you all very much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. You just want to thank me? You ready, man? You don't want to jump? You want to get the front? 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 You want to get the front?
We have six items. We have six items in our consent agenda. Do you guys want to discuss any?
Was there any other citizen's communications, or?
No, they're agenda.
Oh, okay.
They're item number 12. That'll be present.
Motion.
We have a motion by Councilman Garcia to approve.
A second?
We have second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah. I was going to ask if we could just remove item number two. I had a question.
Okay.
If you don't mind, sorry. I was trying to remember which is the one that, I had it written on my, my notes on mine, but I didn't bring it with me, so I'm going by the clean agenda, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, we can just take number two out, but.
You can amend the motion and accept the number.
You want to take it to?
No, we can just discuss it here if we want, but yeah, just to take it out of consent.
Motion to approve everything except two?
Okay.
A second?
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Motion approves. Do we have to go back to that one?
Yeah. You go with the number you numbered it.
Okay. So.
Sorry to make you read the paper.
No, I'm sorry.
You don't have to? Can we, we don't have to?
Okay.
Can we just?
Okay, so yes, item number two.
Longevity pay.
Longevity pay. If I got the right one, that's what I was trying to. I don't know if I got the right number. It's because, well, my question was, and I don't even know if I chose the right one, because that's what I was saying, I was trying to look for my notes and trying to read it real quickly. I got a little bit sidetracked, but I, I was trying to make sure that this was not the one where, um, when some of the longevity pay, because didn't, did we cap off after the 14 years after all, or what happened with that?
The longevity pay will no longer have a cap, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was happening, because I know we had, I know I wasn't able to make the meeting, but I wasn't able to log in, but I could hear you all, and I want to make sure that it was, it was amended, but I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't have a chance to review it, so.
But.
Just explain it, the longevity is the 25 years, it's not the 14. The 14 is the pay plan.
Okay, that, I think that's the one that I was referring to, and I think, that's what I said, I don't know if I pulled the wrong one, but if not, we can address it at the next.
What item is that for the 14th step?
It's not here, it's with the budget.
Yeah, so that will be presented with the budget.
The base scale will be with budget.
Okay. Thank you, sorry. And then it's okay, we're good to go.
Motion to approve?
Okay, motion by Councilman Garcia. We have a second.
A second?
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes?
Number seven.
Can we jump to number 12? We have someone in the audience that might want to go ahead and present. So item number 12, presentation by the Community Transformation Alliance.
We're here to present the voting device upgrade proposal. Voting in Eagle Pass may be easier. And what we're trying to do is make it more accessible. Repurpose manpower hours and provide better transparency. By purchasing new poll book devices through the county and leasing them during election Who is involved would be the city and the county. And our current purposes would be to, um, ensure that they are, I mean, I'm sorry, they present a form of ID and are then located in a large paper poll book. Uh, what we're trying to do instead of having a poll book, a paper poll book, is to, uh,
Council, citizens, continue where Ms. Peddle was going. Our goal with those poll books is to have an updated voting system. We know that our voting system right now has, you know, come in ID, stamp and go. With this new updated polling system, come in, scan, go off, and you go off on your vote. Now, the benefit of the poll books is, right now, we only have one voting site, but we will have two voting sites available if you all come up with it, if you, I'm sorry, if you all agree with it. Now, with these poll books, like we said, they'll make it stream like more faster. As we were talking to the community around, that was one of the things that they were saying, that we were so outdated that they wanted to see something new and improved when it came down to the voting process. Now, on your page, on your sixth page, you do have some companies available. We're not endorsing any company. It's up to the city to actually go through these companies, and these are valid companies that will be holding these, uh, books. Some are made with programs that can go into an iPad, and some are legitimate programs that are set in one computer system. Our recommendation is, and it's just a recommendation, is you all look into the ones that have computer-based systems set into it. Due to the iPads being updated at a frequency, like every six months, we're updating these iPads. Now, on the cost and the breakdown of it, you would have to purchase 10 books, either iPads or legitimate, um, system, as I said before, and it will cost around $20,000 to actually purchase 10 of these books. And it goes down if these companies have specials or don't have specials, might be a little bit less. But once you purchase this, it's a one-time purchase thing, it's already within the system, and then the only thing we would have to, or the city would have to worry about would be your Wi-Fi network. So it depends on which Wi-Fi network you all have. It'll depend on where you have it and where these, um, the cost of the Wi-Fi will be on it. And then let me take, uh, transfer order to Mr. Reyes.
Good evening, council. So, the concept is to get rid of the book, right? When you vote, the book can only be in one place at one time, which means you can only have one voting location, which makes it really difficult to get out the vote and make voting and self-advocacy through all of you in your election. It kind of makes it impossible, right? So what you want to do is create at least two voting sites on each side of the city and make voting accessible, make it easier for people to advocate for themselves civically to make their needs known to all of you, right? That's why we kind of always see the same group of people voting all the time, because it's kind of repetition, you want to spread it out. And when you replace the book with the tablet and you sign in to vote, automatically it shows that you voted across the system and it keeps you from voting in more than one location, right? So what we did is we looked at the samples from the state, you can only buy what the state allows you to buy, and we kind of looked at the EVID Edge as a concept. They're cost-effective, like you said, they're about $2,000 a piece, you need about 10, and it would change the landscape of the election completely, keeping us away from huddling in one parking lot during an election, you'd be across two, right? So it's durable, you can throw it across the room, if the Wi-Fi stops, it keeps working and re-updates when the Wi-Fi kicks back on. There's information there about the EVID Edge, if that's something you want to look into. There's also three counties that already use the EVID Edge, so you can call, reference, see how they like that upgrade, how it worked for their community. Did they see an uptick in voting? Did they see voting go by faster? Did they like having multiple locations instead of one location? Did the community think it's, it was more accessible to make their voices known and heard? And that's the end of our presentation. Is there any questions, any feedback? I know this concept is new, and I know that changing elections could be a little intimidating, but our final ask is to also get the city to contract with the county, like most cities do, to run their city elections. Allow your city employees or city secretary, their staff, to continue doing the job that they have to do all year long, because it's not really fair, right? Elections are difficult, even as candidates or people who hold elections. The county has a whole department for elections. Cities usually contract with the county, they have the staff, the know-how, the means to be able to hold an election. Our recommendation is to contract with them, repurpose your man-hours, and you're likely going to save money not overworking your staff, because they, this doesn't stop because an election's happening, and now you're paying for overtime and other staff members. So, go with the EVID Edge. You don't have to type up voter ID numbers at night after the election and send it to the state. You can push a button, send it to the state and save all those work hours. Use the county, repurpose your money, repurpose your staff, and let the city work and get out of the city election process, and it would probably help a lot with the work culture during the election times as well, because it gets a little intimidating getting in the middle of a hairy election when you know that you're going to work with some of them. So just get rid of the mess, get rid of the chaos, save money, save time, and make voting more accessible to the people that we serve. And that's it. Any questions, feedback, or anything? I know that's a lot.
I think if I can just, oh, no, go ahead, sir. No, I just wanted to say that's a, a great presentation. Thank you for bringing that up. I know we've had discussions with the city secretary as far as what we need to do to make sure that we touch on some of those points, so thank you for, for sharing this with us all of you.
You're welcome. And do you ever have any questions? I mean, you can always reach out to us. I know it can be a little complex and stuff, but we spend a lot of time looking at this one subject, and it's very complex, so we're always here to help. Thank you so much.
I think it's a great presentation. I think what would help us, I think too often we have discussions and we might even have buy-in from the majority of us, but so many of our projects have fallen through the cracks, right? We, we say that we're going to do something, and then we start moving in a certain direction, and then it doesn't get done. So what would be helpful, at, at least for me, is to have a, a timeline of action, right? That we can, we, if, if, if we, we develop action items on the agenda to make sure that we're tracking it and, and hopefully get the buy-in from, from, you know, our, our colleagues to see, you know, this is something that we want to proceed with. What does that look like at month one, at month two, at month three, and, and, and kind of get, get the ball rolling? Is that something that your organization can help us out with?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's, with purchases like this, you're going to restructure an election, it's all about timing. You don't want to do it in the middle, you don't want to do it too soon after everyone's exhausted or too soon before. I mean, you really want to get in that happy medium space, right? You're talking about contracts with the county, you're talking about buying new devices, training, and the city, you can buy your own election devices, but you can't house them. You have to give them to the city, the county. The county has to operate and maintain, and you have to lease it from the county, right? So, it's a process, but I mean, right now would be the time. I mean, you're talking about redoing the election landscape in the City of Eagle Pass with $20,000, right? We've spent a lot more money on crazier stuff, right? So, it's about civic engagement, it's about the community, it's about making it accessible to the people whose knees hurt, their back hurts, or they're less engaged, but they're driving to ATB and wow, there's a place to vote, let me pull over. It's about those opportunities, it's about being there for them. And then our elected officials, at the end of the day, would be an even bigger, nothing or not, a bigger reflection of the people that they serve, right? Instead of the same 5,000 people over and over and over again, so. And that's our goal, sorry.
So if, if I can, just based on your research, I know the city, we hold elections every, every two years, right? So I know we just got through one this year. So, based on the research that you have, you think right now would be a, a great time for the city to start working on this implementation if mayor and council approve for us to move forward with changing the landscape?
You, it's, you could, I mean, there's no better time than now, right? I mean, the elections have, if we look at the cycle, you're not, it's kind of like the same folks voting over and over and over again, and you're seeing, you're, you're seeing that same circle, right? Voting over and over again. So it's just whenever you choose to do it is when you do it, right? I mean, it should have been done yesterday. If, you, I always tell people, when you look at the election results for the, the president or the governor, and they're coloring all the counties, Maverick County is always one of the last ones to be colored in. It's called before our votes are even counted on the larger races, because our election devices are so outdated that it takes time to get the results to the state and then to be reflected to the media, et cetera. So we should, we should make it faster, easier, and it's, and it's cheap, right? So, $20,000 upfront somewhere in that ballpark, and after that, it's just maintenance. So, why not? I mean, it's two locations, spread it out, make it easier. And the county's still going to operate with one location, but it doesn't mean that you have to, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And it would also help with that parking lot situation, not having it in one place.
And this was also presented to the county and, and, or not yet?
Uh, it, it has, not in a public meeting, I went by just to kind of talk about upcoming grants that they have, because their purchases are, you're talking about close to $100,000, because the ballot counting machine is outdated and is no longer going to be recognized by the state, so they have to upgrade their ballot counting machine now. So that ate up the grant money that's now available through the HAVA grant through the state, so it's going to eat up that grant, so there aren't, even if they wanted to, they wouldn't be able to take that grant money to spend it on the vast amount of these machines that they would need to support, was it the, all the precincts that they have. Y'all just have the one city space, right? So they have all these precincts, it just wouldn't be feasible right now, they would have to wait for another grant cycle, because, you know, it's a lot of money. Yeah.
Good deal.
So what would be the next step? I mean, do we put this in the agenda for our next item in the agenda, maybe, to try to see if we want to make a motion on?
Well, my recommendation would be to, it was mayor, if I may, before you make a motion, is to identify a person to, because they have to kind of shop, right? They have to shop the items there before they present to council, and then you can possibly make an item, but you, but a regular person can't go get prices, they're going to require action from council to shop for their devices, and then they can come back to you all with a proposal. That's usually how that works.
We can certainly look into what the, or unless city sec, do you know what the proper process would be to be able, do we have to go out for procurement, or can we just select one of the ones that are approved?
It's going to depend on the prices, but if I can, I can meet with you all, we can discuss some of these options, and then I can present them to administration, and then we can go up to council, depending on the value of, of the purchase itself.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not so versed on that, but when I talked to the people, they said that they are part of some sort of.
Like the prop.
Yeah, and that's why y'all are there, because y'all know that stuff, but yes, yes.
And I think as long as, and I'm glad that you did bring options that are already approved by the state, right? So that would be probably the first box that we need to check, and then we need to look into if they are a part of a purchasing cooperative that we can just, however, we would still like to bring it before a mayor and council and, and present it, even if we can move forward with the purchase of it, just so that y'all are aware. And obviously, you know, we would love to collaborate with your organization to make sure that we're touching on all the points. I know we look at certain things from our perspective, right? Because we're handling the election, but I think if you guys have reached out to the community and asked, I think that would be so that, we want to make sure we make this investment and we're covering all the areas that we need to cover for our next election, definitely.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you for matching your team. To item number seven. An introductory ordinance amending section 26, 183, article 7, chapter 26 of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, for the setting of a new commercial toll rate to, to be collected for the international bridges, finding that the meeting at which this ordinance is passed is open to the public as required by law, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date.
Afternoon, honorable mayor, members of the council. May I proceed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We do have an ordinance that's being presented to you, uh, under the grid system in cooperation with our legal counsel and members of the administration. And if you'd like, I'd read it out as such, read the language, is that fine?
Yes, sir.
It's an ordinance of City of Eagle Pass, Texas, amending chapter 26, article 7, section 26 dash 183, two of the Code of Ordinances by amending the non-commercial vehicle toll rate from $2 per axle to $2.50 per axle, or for $4 per vehicle to $5 per vehicle, providing that this ordinance shall be cumulative, providing the severability clause, providing for publication, and declaring an effective date. Whereas the City of Eagle Pass system wishes to have more organized fee payment structure, and whereas the City of Eagle Pass Bridge System wishes to utilize additional incoming revenue for the construction of the expansion of coming Oriole International Bridge, and any other improvements or payments towards improvements for the City of Eagle Pass. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Council of City of Eagle Pass, Texas, that's section one. The City of Eagle Pass Code of Ordinances, chapter 26, article 7, section 26 dash 23 twenty-six, dash, twenty-three, is hereby amended as follow. Non-commercial vehicles, passenger car or truck, you can see the change there from two to two fifty an axle, or from four to five dollars a vehicle. Motorcycle cart, two to two fifty axle, or four to five dollars per vehicle. Trailer being pulled by either non-commercial class remains two dollars an axle. Express card passenger car or truck, those look like that because those were dates that were installed at the time. The other ones are effective dates that follow as of when they were to be implemented. So the express card passenger car or truck at the time was one fifty to three year vehicle, effective October one, two, twenty-one, was from one seventy-five an axle or three fifty a vehicle, effective October first, two thousand twenty-two, from two dollars an axle to four dollars a vehicle. And what is being proposed now, effective October first, two thousand twenty-five, from two fifty an axle or five dollars a vehicle. This ordinance shall be cumulative of all provisions of ordinances of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, except where the provisions of this ordinance are in direct conflict with the provisions of such ordinances in which event the conflicting provisions of such ordinances are hereby repealed. Section three, it is hereby declared to be mentioned to be the intention of the City Council that the phrases, clauses, sentences, paragraphs, and sections of this ordinance are severable, and if any phrase, clause, sentence, paragraph, or section of this ordinances shall be declared unconstitutional by the valid judgment of decree of any court of competent jurisdiction. Such unconstitutionality shall not affect any of the remaining phrases, clauses, sentences, paragraphs, and sections of this ordinances, since the same would have been enacted by the City Council without the incorporation of this ordinance of any such unconstitutional phrase, cause, clause, or sentence, paragraph, or section.
Mr. Salcedo?
Yes, ma'am, apologize.
I apologize. I think the ordinance that was, that I that I sent in and that I printed was not the last updated one.
You're missing the one on the six dollars if in case we do. Yes. And we can do that in the second reading, ma'am, or if you want, I can hold off and add the one.
Or you could just, if you would like to just present it to council.
And I will also present to the council at this juncture that the there would be a six dollar cash only fee if indeed our patrons decided not to utilize the toll tax. We've done our research, we've done our studies that indicate both five dollars or six dollars, the idea and part of the idea behind the six dollars is to actually get more people to buy on to the five dollar toll tag, which would make the actual system more efficient. The idea was for the system to become efficient. Unfortunately, under the express cards, you had about twenty-five percent of patrons only sign up for that express card. So this way, when you have a toll tax system, what actually helps the system is the fact that most people are on it. So eventually, as you all know, just like everything else, the City of Eagle Pass would like to go cashless. So that caveat that the attorney is talking about for the six dollars will be put into the ordinance if and only you decide to pay in cash instead of using the toll tag. So I do have figures available for you all if you all would like to see them. It'll give you an indication of what the monies revenues that would come in to help offset not only cost of any improvements that are going to be there, but also I made the language effective to where any of that revenue that comes in can also be utilized for any of the projects within the City of Eagle Pass, and not only bridge projects. I don't know if any of y'all have any questions that'd be more than happy to answer, discuss any of the of the ordinance that's been presented here today.
You say that you have those numbers already?
I do. If you'd like, I can give them to you. They're very rough, ma'am. They're not pie in the sky, but if you'd like, may I present them to you?
Sure.
Mister Valdés and I don't do these alone with my assistant, but we had to put them out this evening, but I do have copies for you all in case you want to look at them. And if you need, if need be, I can help with the interpretation of how we should try to look at them. So I'm being a little more conservative on the sheet that I had printed out, and I had anticipated that you would have a hundred percent sign up on the toll tag, which is probably improbable, that's not going to happen. But that gives you an idea of you're looking at additional revenue anywhere in between two point eight on the, two point eight million on the conservative side to the five point one million that you're seeing there in in the sheet that I passed out to you. And there's an indication there on the sheet, Councilwoman, of the amount of people who usually pay with the express card compared to those who pay cash on that spreadsheet.
Is that the forty-two percent that you put on there?
Let's see here. Forty-two percent is the increase total overall of the revenue that was brought in the previous year.
The difference between five and six dollars, right?
Correct, yes, yes, ma'am. So it's, it's, you know, it's, I don't want to say it's very rough, but we remain conservative because even if you look at two thousand twenty-five, our bridge system has been helped a lot by commercial traffic. So the revenues that are coming in continue to increase even though non-commercial has dipped, but non-commercial has dipped on the entire border, on the entire Texas-Mexico border, not just, not just here in Eagle Pass. As a matter of fact, in Eagle Pass, it's dipped a little less than in other places. But the, but the non-commercial, the vision of of Mr. Valdés, especially on this expansion, is really going to help with revenue to help the city.
And is the commercial already on a tag system, or would they adopt this as well?
Very good question, ma'am. Actually, the non-commercial is the first thing that we're going to transition, to make sure they get there first, and then after that, we follow the regular patrons. Ms. Valeria Flotis and our assistants, including some of the staff, have been keying in the information, one by one by one, on the patrons that we do have. We have close to twenty thousand patrons. The idea is to make sure that anybody who uses the bridge system itself will eventually be toll tagged, but the non-commercial will be the first ones that we transition.
You're saying non-commercial, that's commercial, right?
I'm sorry, the commercial is the first, yeah, the commercial. The non, the, yeah, the commercial is the first ones that we're going to tag. Thank you, thank you for that correction, yes.
Okay, any?
Really quick, one more question, sorry. So the commercial, is that the, you know what, you're proposing effective date, October first, two thousand twenty-five?
That's correct.
I was getting confused with the...
In reality, the date that's that it's going to take come to fruition is October twenty-nine of two thousand twenty-five, but the language itself states October, October first. If we can expedite it, we will. We're dealing with a, with some consultants on the change that would allow us to work on two lanes at the same time instead of one. If indeed they can do that, then we would be able to push up the date some, but not by much, probably by about two to three weeks.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just to clarify, so the language says October first, express card or toll tag. So right now, we still have the express card, so then the the rate change would be effective October one.
Correct.
Right?
The initial question was about the toll tag, though.
Yes, but the rate change will change October one. That's when the new rate would be take effect.
October the first.
October the first.
If you could just make it clear.
Yeah.
Already all come.
Yes, so the 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 toll change would be effective October one. Currently, we have the express cards, those will be transitioned over to toll tags, but they will still be able to be used until we get the toll tags in. So whether it's an express card or a toll tag, the charge would be five dollars for using those, and then if you use cash, it would be six dollars. But both go effective October first, if if approved by mayor and council, of course.
Any other questions? Do I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilwoman Garcia. Do I have a second? Have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. Item number eight. An introductory ordinance of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, amending chapter six by amending articles one, three, and five to mirror state law in regard to dangerous dogs and rabies control and adding fees for animal control services.
Oh, yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We, when I say we, I see the city attorney and and our team at the PD took our time with this chapter. It's a very large chapter, the animal control, or the animal chapter in in our city ordinance. So we basically redid the entire ordinance and mirrored it more along state laws, and we added fees. You go to page eight, you can see that we added fees that were never implemented through animal control. And and it goes from microchipping all the way to euthanasia fees, and and we mirrored other cities that had the same amount of of fees applied to the actual ordinance, but we were able to complete the ordinance and and submit it, and we're asking for approval.
Excellent. Thank you, ma'am. Any questions? Okay, I like it. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion to approve. Motion by Councilwoman Diaz. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Davis. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, chief. Item number one, number nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, authorizing the city manager to execute chapter three hundred and eighty agreement with Project Robin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was previously previously taken here to City Council for approval for incentives. This resolution is just to authorize city manager to execute the agreement with Project Robin.
Any questions, council? Can I entertain a motion? Motion by Councilwoman Diaz. Do I have a second?
It was myself.
Excuse me?
It was myself, the medical, Mayor Broten Davis.
Davis, sorry. Motion by Councilman Davis, second by Councilman Garcia. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Ari. Item number ten, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, amending exhibit A of the resolution twenty nineteen sixty R and adopting a version three of the City of Eagle Pass, Chapter three eighty Economic Incentives Policy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Now, this resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero sixty R was first passed December third, two thousand nineteen. It's been previously amended for exhibit A, which is the incentives policy version two. We're bringing it back to council for revision and updates on this incentives policy. This would be an amendment also to the resolution for policy version three. As you know, as the city keeps growing, the incentives policy that we currently have is a bit outdated. We typically look to change this incentives policy every two years. This one has been in place for three years already, since two thousand twenty-two. So some of the proposed updates are to remove the destination tourism program, to add a note under program four, category two, to add clarification on retail development incentives under program four, add category three, which is entertainment development. It is a sales tax rebate. And reclassify, reclassify program six, economic impact fund to industrial advantage program, and to add wage requirement. There is a slide that is missing here, and that is to make the current business improvement grant, which was introduced as a pilot program, and to keep it as a permanent program. That is the, one of the tools that we currently use to assist the small businesses within the City of Eagle Pass outside of the downtown area to make improvements to their facade, including signage. So the first change would be to remove destination tourism program. As you all know, in the past, we've already attracted three new hotels, which did get a hot, hotel occupancy tax rebate. The previously adopted policy did include this destination tourism program, and it was used for that purpose, to attract new hotels to our area. We feel that that need has already been met, and this incentive is no longer required at this moment, which is the reason why we're now proposing to remove it from the current incentives policy. The note under program four, category two, to add clarification on retail development, the note would state national fast food chains are explicitly excluded from eligibility. This incentive is intended more to attract anchor tenants such as grocery chains, chains or retail concepts that meet the underserved community needs or generate significant new tax revenue, especially in areas that we deem need revitalization. Program four, category...
So so you're going to take it away, you're going to take away the fast food chains and just focus on?
So it did have that. Again, when we do bring an application to council, it is on a case-by-case basis, and council can always choose to deviate from the current incentives policy, but we are adding language on there to exclude fat, fast food restaurants. It is, it is already on there, but we're just being a little bit more specific.
And are you bringing every application to council?
Yes, every application that we receive must go to council and for for revision and for approval or nonapproval.
With the proposed incentives, right?
Yes. And we will let you know what it is that they qualify for, depending on the type of business that they are.
And this goes for all these incentives?
Yes. The only ones that don't come are for the small businesses, like the Business Improvement Grant, the revolving loan fund program, and the facade ground program. Those don't come, but anything else that's a sales tax rebate, property tax rebate, and the previous hotel occupancy tax rebate do come to council, any application that we receive.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So program four, category three, is a new incentive that we added. It's the Entertainment and Recreation Development Tax Rebate. It is a sales tax rebate. Category three proposes, is proposed as an addition under program four. The new category focuses on fulfilling the need for entertainment spaces for families and our youth. It is a performance-based sales tax rebate. That means that the tax rebates that they receive are based on the sales taxes that they made. It is not a tax abatement, it is a sales tax rebate for up to three years at the city's one percent, again, on a case-by-case basis and as approved by council. It does require the creation of a minimum five full-time jobs with a pay above the minimum wage pay rate at the time of contract, and it requires a minimum one million in improvements, not including the the acquisition of the land. Category six proposed changes is to rename Economic Impact Fund to Industrial Advantage Program. The previous criteria will be removed and new criteria will be added. Customized incentive pack, incentive package focused on regulatory and operational cost relief in lieu of direct funding. Stipends and grants are available on a case-by-case basis. Applicants must make substantial development and/or create a substantial number of jobs, and that is broken down on the incentives policy package in front of you. It does state the number of jobs that they must create and the wage that they need to to have, along with the, with the benefits that they're supposed to provide their employees, I'm sorry. So the development and permit fee waivers, utility infrastructure assistance, and we will work with utility companies, expedited permitting, again, we will work with the Community Development Department to make sure, you know, time is money, so we want to make sure that the process is fast, but that we're also working with them. Job creation grants or stipends, the wages must be above the county average wage, which is twenty-three dollars and fifty-one cents, and it is subject to the availability of funding. Priority projects will be with significant capital investment, quality full-time jobs, and long-term economic impact. So this is for the larger manufacturing companies. And the one that we were missing here is a previously previously discussed one, the Business Improvement Grant Program. Again, the purpose of the Chapter three eighty Economic Stimulus Initiative is to continue to provide support to retain and attract and expand growing industries, and to make sure that we are staying relevant and providing incentives to attract the correct industries to our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just really quick, if I can, Ms. Adisla, or Ms. Bendoza, can you go just very quickly through the different incentive packages that we're proposing? And just, I, what I kind of want is for you to just give us some examples of what kind of businesses we might be targeting, for those that are watching, that they can understand what these incentives apply to. I know that some of this language may not be very common for for certain individuals, so I want to just, you know, if we're talking big box stores, you know, what are we talking? Target, Sam's, you know, just kind of what it is that we're targeting, and and that we, the community, can see what it is that we're trying to attract to the community. Obviously, we mentioned that we have been successful with this same incentive package to bring three new hotels, so obviously, you know, it does work in attracting investment in the area, but just so that the community can know what we're shifting, or what we're proposing to shift our focus. And then, of course, by all means, if we can get input from mayor and council as far as are we on the right track on where where we see we need investment for.
And also add, like, what are we doing to market that each industry, or that, I mean, individually?
To attract those, okay. Please, Ms. Ari.
Yes, so under the note under program four, category two, to add clarification on retail development, again, we do have a sales tax rebate program, whereas a lot of times it can be implied that that's just to attract restaurants, and that is not the case. This type of incentives are also to attract big box retail, like Mr. Valdés said, like Target, Costco's, Sam's Club. Sales tax rebates are for these type of businesses, and that, in that case, they also qualify for property tax rebates if they are making an investment of over three million dollars, not including the purchase of the land. So this is not just for sit-down restaurants that are obviously not fast food, it is also to attract your bigger box retail stores. And then for the Entertainment and Recreation Development Tax Rebate, again, that is a sales tax rebate. As you know, we do have a need to attract those type of industries to bring a little bit more entertainment for our youth and our families. That includes anything from jumping places, like your urban air, your altitude, or even like your smaller flags that are for for jumping places for kids. They also include anything like, I don't know, like laser tag, bowling alleys, cinemas, anything that's entertainment, and this is a sales tax rebate for those type of businesses. Category four, which is the Economic Impact Fund now changed to Industrial Advantage Program, that is for your larger manufacturing companies, and that, as you know, most of them have high needs for employees ranging from a hundred to three hundred employees. We are asking that they provide higher wages, as we know, higher wages are a big need here in our community. And as far as what we can do to attract, or what we're doing to attract this type of businesses, when it comes to big box retail, we do attend conferences that you are actually face-to-face with those companies, and you get to give them the pitch, give them the incentives policy, even show them like land proposals of what we have here in the community. A lot of times, expansion plans that they might have for the next three to five years might be focusing on different areas that are not necessarily South Texas, but it's always great to have that communication with them, and they can put a Eagle Pass in the map, because a lot of times, they don't know where Eagle Pass is. So when we're out there, we let them know where we're at, we let them know that we do have a lot of tourism, a lot of people that come here from Mexico that shop here, and just the other companies that are already here in Eagle Pass that have been successful because of that tourism that we get here to the community. And when it comes to manufacturing companies, we do a trend, attend, I'm sorry, trade shows here in Texas and in other areas, again, to let them know where we're located, that we're the safest, the fastest port, that we have the available talent, that we have available land, and of course, to let them know about our incentives.
I just want to add to clarify for those that are watching, so...
So I know that there's a misconception in our community that we are only trying to attract, you know, sit-down restaurants, fast food chains, but just to clarify that we understand what you're saying. You go and you sit down with, you know, these companies like Target and, but, or Costco's, but however, they are targeting a certain area of Texas, so we kind of sometimes miss the timeline, right? I mean, it's not to our fault or anything like that, or the fact that we're a smaller city, and then now you have that, you build that communication or that relationship to where now they know Eagle Pass, you know, brings in, you know, buyers from, you know, Mexico, and that we actually do have, you know, that people that come and purchase here. And then now we have built that relationship, and they'll be on the lookout next time that our area is, you know, a possibility where they would like to build, right?
Yes, so we're always looking to attract your bigger-box retail businesses. Again, sometimes they have different plans. They're not necessarily even looking at Texas sometimes. Sometimes they're concentrating California or other areas of the US. But like you mentioned, it is good to be out there and to let them know. And just keep going, like, we were in contact with Texas Roadhouse for a long time before they finally said, okay, well, look at Eagle Pass. So sometimes it takes time, but we're always trying to be, bring different businesses to the community, not just restaurants. And as far as manufacturing, that it is something that we're already focusing on, we are always responding to requests for information from the state and letting them know that we have the available talent, the incentives, the land, everything. So we are making our case. But again, we're in competition with other cities, and a lot of times, it looks a lot of different factors.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I think it's important to note that, just like you mentioned, Councilwoman Ramon, it's getting in front of them, planting the seed, and then continuing to follow up. Follow up, follow up, follow up, that's key, until they get tired of us asking them that they're gonna look our way, right? So that's the challenge that Ms. Adisla has in this position, leading the Economic Development Department, is a lot of the times, you know, these big industries are not looking our way, so we need to get them to look our way. But that's where this incentive package comes into play, because sometimes, if they're on the fence, this incentive package will get them to make the investment in Eagle Pass. So again, we are trying very hard to try to diversify the business that we have. I know we've been successful with some of the current restaurants that we've had with the hotels. We want to expand that, and I know one of the priorities is to also bring better jobs to the community, right? Helping our community with the quality of life. So with this incentive package, packages that we're offering, we think that we can tap into those other industries that we want to bring to Eagle Pass.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any questions?
And just if I can add, like the question that was asked, any, every incentive package will be brought before mayor and council. This is a guide that we utilize as a template, right, of what we want to move forward with. But if, I guess if the need is there and we need to increase the incentives-
Negotiate.
Yeah, negotiate and say, hey, well, you know what? These incentives don't work, this is what I need. Mayor and council has the authority to override what we approve right now and come back and say, hey, you know what? We want a target. Let's give them 10 years, even though we're saying the maximum would be three years or five years. So it's happened in the past, so I want y'all to know that if there's something that we absolutely want to target, no pun intended, right, to target, but we certainly can, and we can certainly sit down with them and say, what do you need to come to Eagle Pass? And then we bring that to you guys, and then you guys, mayor and council ultimately will decide, you know what? Let's do it. But I think until we get a template in place that we can at least propose, and they can give us a counter, and we can negotiate, and ultimately hopefully come into an agreement. And it doesn't have to be a target, it can be just any business in general that we want to attract to Eagle Pass.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Any questions? Can I entertain the motion?
I motion for approval.
Motion by Councilwoman Ramon. Do I have a second?
One second.
Second by Councilman Diaz. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous motion passes. Item 11, a resolution of the City of Eagle Pass, Texas, approving the release of parkland dedication funds in the amount of $208,150 to Maverick County for the implementation of a fitness court project and the other parkland improvements, recognizing that such funds were collected by the city on behalf of Maverick County and are to be used in accordance with parkland dedication requirements.
Mayor and council, this item, we put before mayor and council for approval of the resolution. If y'all recall, at the last meeting, we presented an interlocal agreement for the funding that we have already sent over to the county. It's in their possession, but their auditor is requesting a document that confirms that the City of Eagle Pass is providing this funding for this purpose, and they are allowed to utilize it as such, to recognize it as approved revenue to come into the county. So I know at that time, our concerns were, if the need for an interlocal was there, I was able to get with the county, and we did discuss that maybe we could provide a resolution just confirming that the City of Eagle Pass did indeed send this fund, and this is its intended purposes for what we collected it. So ultimately, our expectation is for them to use it as such as well. Ultimately, after they receive the funds, you know, the city relinquishes all liability on those funds, and we expect for them to fully follow the requirements in which these funds were collected. So at this time, we would like to recommend that we approve this resolution so we can present it to the county, and they can move forward with utilizing the funds accordingly.
Any questions?
No, I mean, this was, this is basically what, this was the five requirements as stipulated by the auditor, just to make sure again.
Yes, they did discuss it with the auditor, and they told them, or I told them what our concerns were with the interlocal, and I said, is there something else that we can provide? So they agreed, and they did provide the language. The language was reviewed by our city attorney, so it's good to move forward if mayor and council choose to do so.
Motion by Councilwoman Garcia.
You were making a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous motion passes. Item 13, consideration of possible approval of change order number one for the hike and bike trail project.
Good afternoon, mayor, council, administration. First and foremost, introduce myself, the water-solten U-City engineer. I'm looking forward to the opportunity of working with each and every one of you. Here to discuss this item on the hike and bike trail. Change order number one, to cover primarily the installation of the irrigation system for 35 trees that are installed in the project. Some of the signs that were placed on the trail, as well as additional earthwork that was done by forward construction that completed the project. No contingency on this project, although with a 1.8 million price tag, this change order at 46,586 puts us at 2.5%, which I think is pretty good. The project is having some call boxes installed, and I think it's being handed over here very soon, the next couple of days, to the city. So overall, I don't know if y'all have any questions of any other line items in front of you, but the project is, I would say, pretty much complete.
And this was just with the decision to add some trees to the trail to provide some shade, and it requires irrigation, so this is part of that, where we added trees.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Davis. Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Garcia. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous motion passes. Item 14, consideration of possible approval to allow the city manager to negotiate and enter into agreement with Holler Hero to provide technology services for the solid waste division for an amount not exceeded to $173,530.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. Excuse my voice, I'm a little bit under the weather. I do have a representative from Holler Hero online. If y'all want to hear a couple of words with him, I do plan on keeping it short. So yes, right now, we are trying to get approval for city manager to be able to enter into contractual for at least a term of three years. Now... Sorry. There is a one-time fee of $15,000. There is a yearly fee, sorry. There is a yearly fee for 14 licenses of $42,840. Now, as those three years accumulated, we do want to try to reach an agreement not to exceed $173,530. Now, our main goal is to digitize all the routes. At the moment... Sorry, at the moment, we have everything on paper. All of our staff in the solid waste department has to undergo a minimum of six months worth of training. That means that they have to ride along with a seasoned driver for a total of six months. That in the end is about 980 hours that they have to ride along. With this technology, we can digitize those routes and reach a point where we can put these on a tablet, assign these people a PIN, allow them to log into their PIN, and pick the route for the day. That would automatically put them on the route. They wouldn't have to undergo all of this training. We could literally lose at least the first month, so a month and a half, just in training, making sure that they can operate these vehicles safely, and they could complete the routes, of course. Now, two major things that I want to point out about this. Besides that one major thing, you know, saving time, of course, is always a good thing. We do have a current state of the solid waste department is the extras are not consistently tracked. Now, what do I mean by that? If somebody moves out of their apartment, there is no method right now where they have to turn that trash can in. If a neighbor sees it openly there, they can go and grab it, add it to their house, and there's no way to track that. Now, with this software, we can track how many, how many trash cans each house has, and be able to build that accordingly, or maybe go send somebody out there to go remove it. You know, just be able to track that completely is gonna be a game changer for our department. We truly believe that this technology, along with all my staff, I do have Mr. Motta here present, but along with all of our staff, as we've been reviewing this technology, we do believe this is the future for solid waste, as far as cost savings. It looks like a hefty amount that we're gonna invest into it, but it is a very small amount to pay compared to the savings that we're gonna have in the department. Sorry, and like I said, I do have Park Gamble. He is from Holler Hero. He can give a rundown of just the technology itself and how it works.
Yes, thank you, Daniel. Appreciate that introduction. Thank you, honorable members of the council, city management, finance procurement, everyone here. I appreciate you allowing me to join remotely. I would love to come down and visit you all there in Eagle Pass. I was born in Houston, Texas, myself. And as Daniel said, what we do here at Holler Hero is we bring a modern software platform specifically built for municipal and private waste operations, helping manage residential, commercial, roll-off, all lines of business that you are running there at Eagle Pass. Routing, customer management, billing, specifically if you have your rural customers, I know you bill them directly. Those in the city border would be able to still use the existing billing system that you have through the data coming across from Holler Hero. Service verification. All of this in one system that your team will have access to. You'll have unlimited users, you'll have unlimited support. And speaking of support, all of our support is local to the United States. They're all Holler Hero employees, so you will have dedicated support. We, Daniel and I talked about Oscar, who's our AI bot that can answer a whole bunch of your questions for you, but we'll have people right here able to answer questions in five minutes, should you need those. So to kind of run down what Daniel said around what we do for munis like Eagle Pass, the digitized of the routing. So optimize daily routes, delivered right to the driver tablets with turn-by-turn directions if they need them. Stop lists, all right there. Service verification, which is so important. In a paper-based world like you have now, you don't have the ability to verify service electronically. In the Holler Hero world, you will be able to have that. So that data captured in the tablet will appear in the home, the back office, the city offices, and inbound calls, customer complaints for missed pickups, let's say, any other sort of complaint they have. Your team will have those, that information available to them in near-real time to answer calls more quickly and ultimately reduce call complaints, call, inbound calls in total. Like I said, we can integrate with your existing billing system as well as create a forum for Eagle Pass to bill rural customers directly. And a key point, when Daniel and I were building out the ROI around this solution, the new revenue from extra pickups, should the city elect to do that, can be a very nice source of funding for this sort of project to help modernize the city. So when I, when we, Daniel and I and his team, looked at what this solution could mean to the city of Eagle Pass, I think we start first and foremost with onboarding of drivers. We look at going from six months, 960 hours to onboard a driver, to one month. So you're not only saving five months of driver onboarding, but you're getting productivity out of that driver one month into their service. And based on some estimates we have on, you know, what drivers are making, you know, this could be up to $60,000 in annual impact. And reducing call volumes, you know, those 40 missed pickups every week with a 10-minute average call handling time, if that drops down by 30% and the calls are shorter, you know, again, you're looking at, you know, many thousands of dollars saved there. It'll be a modern service for your residents. I've heard in this meeting a lot of quality-of-life discussion, and this is a big part of it. Anyone who thinks that trash collection is easy has never done it before, as Daniel can profess to. And we bring a modern platform to help your drivers, your constituents, as well as all of your people working in city. So better data for leadership. We have an amazing reporting engine that can give you insights into your collection world, into driver behavior, into your constituent behaviors, into route mileage, into expenses. I mentioned how we can integrate into existing systems, and we're on Sourcewell, so the procurement process is easier, and we can potentially be live in under 90 days. And I'm happy to take any questions, and I, again, appreciate all of your time and the honor of speaking in front of you today.
Thank you, Park.
You're welcome.
I think if I can add, one of the, I think one of the key reasons for doing this is the, I guess, making it more accessible for the drivers to be able to follow their routes without needing to go through a rigorous training and learning the routes. There's different sections of the city that require different routes, and currently, they're all on paper. And I feel like that is hurting us whenever it comes to turnover, to be able to put somebody on the route a lot faster. And for me, this is one that is critical in being able to provide a better service to the community. But the other very, very important one that I know Mr. Gamble here did touch on is the optimization. Although we've created these routes assuming that it's the best way to get to that entire area as fast as possible, what this system is gonna do, it's going to learn the way we're doing it, and then it's going to optimize it and tell us, for this area, this is the fastest way that you can get this route done. So that would mean that our service would improve in getting the area picked up a lot faster than what we're used to now. So I think, one, it's gonna be easier on training, getting people prepared, and ultimately making it easier for them to be able to handle the routes. But the other one is the optimization. We'll be able to save time, hopefully money. You know, if we're going a route that's longer than we need to, or we're wasting extra gas, we're wasting extra time. All of this will help us make sure that every single route that we have is the best, we're picking it up in the best possible way. And like Mr. Gamble said, it would literally be to a T, turn by turn, stop by stop. It would, it will tell- It would, it will tell you where you need to stop. It'll tell the driver what he's picked up, what he hasn't picked up. And, uh, our, uh, solid waste leadership would be able to have a map and see all the trucks live, where they are, where they're picking up. So somebody calls and says, hey, you know what, the, the, the truck has not been to my place. They can check and say, hey, you know what, they're about two blocks away, they will be there shortly. Or you know what, they did pass by there, they didn't, they didn't pick up. And then at that point, that's where they'll be able to verify why was, why, why didn't they pick up, right? Was the, the trash can not out there, right? And I think that's a very popular one where people say, my trash can was out there and it wasn't really there. They will be able with this app, be able to show. But, but, but i- it's just so that we can be able to react a lot faster to these issues and be able to prove we did pass. The system will allow you to take a picture, you know, there was a car in front of the trash can. Well, they can't pick up, right? So they take a picture, so when they get the call at the office, they'll be able to say, hey, you know what? There was a red, you know, F-one-fifty truck in front of the garbage can, that's why they did not pick it up. So it just makes everything more efficient.
Yeah, I, I got to, to go through the presentation. Very efficient.
Yes.
Very, very efficient.
I do have a question, those a hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars, did I understand correctly? That's for three years or is it per year of the three years?
For the three years, yes.
There's a one-time onboarding fee of fifteen thousand?
Yes, now, there is not to exceed that amount, so we're, we're looking to aim a lot lower than that, right, Park?
That's correct, yeah. Uh, our current, yeah, our current contract is one year, but we will rewrite it for three years with that, that not to exceed, uh, the number one, seven, three, five, three, zero.
And, uh, you can ask, ask Mr. Gamble, when they did present the, the tutorial or to, to show us how this would work, um, the demo, I'm sorry. He knows that the expectations from the city of Eagle Pass are very high. That, um, if, if we are not one hundred and fifty percent satisfied with the service level that we're getting, that we would, we would opt to terminate the contract. So at the end of the day, he understands the expectations that are being set forth by city leadership as far as we want to make sure that what he's proposing to us is what we're getting. And at the same time, you know, the challenge is also on the department to make sure they utilize all the tools that this, uh, software brings to get the most out of it, right? So it's, it, it's a two-way street. We depend on the, on the software vendor to provide us what, what, what they are telling us it's going to provide. But at the same time, the department is committed to utilizing the tools to provide a better service to the community.
Thank you. Thank you both. Do I have any question from council?
Did you, I don't know if I heard incorrectly or not, but I mean, did it say that there was something about for billing? I, I, that's what I didn't, because I know I went through a little bit quickly, but since we're obviously, I mean, we know the way we're billing it now. I mean, is it going to migrate into that system? Is it compatible with that system or?
So, from what I understand, Mr. Gamble, and if I misspeak, if you want to just correct me, but it, it can go either way. We can stay where we are now, uh, through the same process that we have, or should the city decide, we can take on the billing as well. So this, this, this tool has that as well. And I think for the, um, extras, I think it's, it is going to come in, in, into play, right? For, for the billing, uh, maybe not all of it, but we have some that we are going to utilize this tool for immediately coming out of the box, right?
Yes, sir. So as soon as it, it migrates all the information into the system, it'll start automatically telling the driver, you know what, there's supposed to be only one pickup here at this, uh, address. And if that driver shows up to that address, sees two or three, he can automatically report that there and, uh, it'll, it'll update the system. So then that's where we can make the, you, we can start initially, you know, just kind of, hey, you know what, let's pick up those cans. Or we can automatically bill, bill that, um, update the bill for that.
Yep. Yeah, and I'll, I'll just add briefly, uh, our understanding right now is the, the people in the city limit go to the water bill. Those outside the city limit, your, the public works bills them directly. And we can handle both of those scenarios. We can pass all the billing information we capture in the city over to the water bill. Or if public work wants to bill directly out to the people, they can do that from Holler Hero. And then, of course, anything outside the city, right now, you're billing directly, public works is billing directly and we can handle that as well.
And just to clarify, this is a turnkey solution where Holler Hero is going to do all the transition, migration of all the accounts, get everything set up for us, right, our database?
We, we will, your, your database of customers, uh, citizens, as it were, uh, will be made available to us and we will, in that one-time implementation, training, configuration, onboarding of, of back office drivers, that's all included in that fifteen thousand number, the one-time charge.
Thank you, Mr. Gamble.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Okay, can I entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Garcia, Councilman Garcia, do I have a second? Second by Councilman Davis. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you, Park.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. Vado.
Thank you.
Okay, item number fifteen, consideration and possible approval to allow our city manager to enter into a lease agreement with a suitable city-owned building with Disaster Relief Inc. for the establishment of an operation of Manos Unidas Women's Shelter.
Mayor, Council, good, good afternoon. So the, the, um, city-owned building that we're discussing here is the, uh, red brick, uh, old hospital building. Um, this building is currently not being utilized for any city, uh, purposes. And, um, we have been in conversations with Disaster Relief. They have been, uh, very active in trying to bring a women's, um, shelter to Eagle Pass. And, uh, they're working, uh, with Manos Unidas to get funding to be able to establish a, uh, women's shelter here in Eagle Pass. Uh, right now, we currently do not have a women's shelter. We do have an organization that represents a women's shelter, but the women's shelter is actually in Carrizo. Um, so what we're trying to do is obviously provide this service here locally. We've been in constant contact with not only Disaster Relief, but also, uh, Manos Unidas. And, uh, we feel like there may be an opportunity for the city to partner up with them to move this project forward. Uh, we did get the building, uh, tested for asbestos and, uh, the, the, um, the test results came back that it was very minimal, that it could be, uh, it could be abated and, uh, and, and the building could be used. So I know we've been in contact with, um, with the organization and, and they're, uh, excited that, that this building might be able to fit, the model that we would need for a women's shelter. It has already different rooms, um, where could serve as where the, the individuals would stay that would be housed there. So the, the, I, I would say the makeup of the building would be a, a pretty good fit for what, what they're proposing. Obviously, we would need to negotiate as far as what the city would be responsible for. Uh, we do have, um, scheduled visit from an architect just to kind of provide, uh, uh, I guess, a understanding of, you know, what are some of the needs that maybe need to put into the building for it to be a safe, uh, usable building? And, uh, we would intend to bring that to mayor and council. But ultimately, from, from what we understand on our part is they're asking for this to be a partnership on behalf of the city to, uh, allow them to lease the building from the city and they would take care of operating the, the, the shelter. Because as we all know, um, the city, we currently don't have the capacity to do that. So that's where they would take on that responsibility and they are being very active in, in, in seeking funding and they have been successful. So I think this would be a great opportunity for the city to provide this much-needed service here in the community.
Thank you, sir. Uh, do we have any questions?
When, when would that, uh, meeting with the architect happen?
Mr. Mudd? It's, it's on Friday.
Oh, it's on Friday?
It's on Friday already.
And they're going to bring us like the proposed?
Yeah, so once we're going to walk, we're going to have our engineering team walk the building with them and kind of look maybe for some of the structure issues that the building may have that need to be repaired before, I mean, it, it is a very old building. Uh, but I know that in discussions with Disaster Relief and, and Manos Unidas, they would be willing to, uh, to put funding in to make the repairs and, and make it. But we're doing this just to kind of know on our side, how, how does a building, you know, how does a building look structurally, right? So it's good for us to know that information and at the same time, if we do, if mayor and council do decide to move forward with this, this is the information that the organization can use to bring in somebody to help rehabilitate the facility.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Adam. Do you have any other questions?
I mean, I, I think it's a really good idea, it's a good project, it would be a good utilization of the building. I mean, to serve a need that's been there unfortunately, you know, I mean, for a very long time and it seems to be, you know, getting a little bit worse. But, uh, I mean, like, I don't have a problem going forward with it, I just want to, I would like to see a lot of more things more laid out before it's just like a, a cart once to go ahead. But at the same time, I don't want to hold it back, I don't, you know what I mean? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm okay, me personally, I'm okay with exploring what we need to do just to make sure that, I mean, we have everything more set in place, concrete as, or so what is the expectation of the, or the, the contribution portion of the city?
The, the way that it's been discussed, yes, it would just be, um, come into terms with u- utilization of the building.
Would it be helpful for us to express what we would like to see in the lease agreement or what our priorities are to help it move along? And that way, when you do bring it back, hopefully it answers the majority of the questions that we might have. I know for me, on my end, I would like to expressly have it designated just for that. You know, to make sure that we, uh, set terms and limits around the use of this space. So, uh, just designated, I know that it, it's expressed in the letter, but if we can, um, you know, designate, uh, the MOU to clearly express that it is intended for that use and that use only, that would be what I would want to see. Um, also maybe kind of delineating what, uh, part would be responsible th- for the city and what part would be responsible for organization relief? Uh, and then maybe in conversations with them, I think that, you know, we can approach it as a phased approach. I know that we've applied for some funding, hopefully we get it, but, uh, you know, kind of have contingency plans rolled out on exactly, these are our timelines. This will happen by this date and, you know, if we secure this funding. I don't know if, if Councilman Davis has other, other concerns?
No, I mean, not really concerns, like I said, I just want to make sure that it's maximized, you know what I mean? It's just like, I don't want us to just like rush it and it not be what we need to do, but I mean, you know, I, I, I'm in, I'm in agreement with what you're saying and it like, I'm not trying to, I don't want it to become to where we're trying to dictate what we want them to do, but I, we, we do want to also make sure that, I mean, there's further like, I guess, vision from the organization, because I, I don't really know exactly what they're wanting to do other than the, the shelter itself. But I mean, to maybe go a little bit step further, I mean, to incorporate some areas of counseling as well as resource acquisition for some of the individuals that are going through it, because this is, it's a stepping stone, basically. And we, but we want to make sure that we're putting the, the residents on the right path, because I mean, it's not, uh, a good position to be in and we want to make sure that we sort of help them along the way, not just the immediate shelter, but you know, get them in the right foot, you know? I, I, I hate to say it like out the door, but you know, it's just like, we want to make sure that we're walking them along that path, because a lot of the times it's very difficult for people. And, I mean, some of the studies that I've done on that is that, um, it's very difficult for them to, you know, tear away from that cycle. So we want to make sure that there's a lot of support all the way through, it's not just the shelter part of it, but, I mean, since we're doing it, let's go ahead and do it a little bit a step farther.
Okay, absolutely. A- and I know that, you know, initially we wanted to, you know, get, you know, we've had these conversations, um, as far as what we would like to use the building for, but we wanted to get mayor and council buy-in before we start getting into the terms of how this is going to work before we bring it to mayor and council. So I think ideally what I would like to do is sit down with them and start to go through the, uh, through the terms of how this agreement would, would be and what the city is responsible, what they are responsible for and, and what the plan would be as we move forward. I think, um, once this building is, is rehabilitated, I think, um, you know, the purpose would be for this, but if at any point, you know, it, it doesn't work, then the city could always use that building for something else. The rehabilitation of that building, I think, is critical, uh, you know, whether we move forward with this or anything else that we want to use it for. So I, I can certainly do that. And if there's anything that comes to mind while we're, we're getting this agreement in place, you know, please feel free to reach out to me and just let me know. Hey, if we can include this, obviously, or at this point, it's negotiations, right? So you ask, they ask, and you kind of go back and forth a little bit until we kind of come to an agreement that we feel everyone wins.
When you have those meetings, maybe let council know if they want to be part of it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think that would be awesome. If we could do maybe like a little workshop, get everyone together and just kind of exchange some of the ideas of what we would want to do. I know that the building is huge and I know that in conversations they, we do want to do it kind of like in a phased approach where you rehabilitate a certain part of the building, make that usable, and then as the need starts to come, you start moving through. So, yeah, there's, we need to be very strategic on how we move this forward so that we can get it up and running as soon as possible.
Thank you, thank you, CM. Any other questions? Can I entertain a motion?
So then you can motion for negotiation?
Is it more like, yeah, that's what I was like.
I motion to negotiate.
That's the motion.
The lease agreement.
Motion by Councilwoman Ramon, do I have a second? I'll, I'll second. Second by Councilman Diaz. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, motion passes. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Garcia, second. Have a second.
I second.
Second by Councilwoman Ramon. All those in favor? Unanimous.